Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. This meeting and all meetings of this council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with the Wisconsin statute so a citizenry may be aware of the time, the place, and the agenda of this meeting. We'll have a roll call.
Shaney Appleby?
Here.
Johanna Edwards?
Here.
Nick Gunderson?
Here.
Keith Nedowski?
Here.
Scott Rasmussen?
Here.
Bruce Brunner is absent.
Okay, thank you. I would ask that everyone join us in the pledge allegiance led by Nick Gunderson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on, number three. Need a motion then to approve the agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any comments, questions, concerns on the agenda? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next, we need a motion then to approve from our regular council meeting on October 20th and our special council meeting on November 3rd, 2014.
I saw move.
I'll second it.
Okay. I take it that's for both of them?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the regular council meeting October 20th and November, special council meeting on November 3rd. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for 2015 budget. Need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to open for public hearing for 2015 budget.
I'll second.
Thank you. You really have a vote. All in favor of the opening the public hearing? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Carried.
The deal will be, real quick, we've got the public hearing open and there is, there are two closed sessions of the meeting before we get to the open session for the budget so the public hearing, people come in between now and whenever the closed session, we get to the closed session. Is anybody here to speak on the budget? If not, feel free to turn the meeting.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to citizens' appearance.
Lane and Sally Reese.
Lane and Sally Reese.
We're here in regards to an unsightly fence that's on the end of our driveway. We've asked several times to have it removed. This fence went up last winter. Our neighbor who's here did not want our snow on his property, so he put up this yellow snow fence, which I thought, okay, it's winter, that's fine. It's still up to this day. We've asked several times to have it taken down. He said he would take it down if we put a fence up. We can't put the fence up unless he takes it down. We've called law enforcement to ask to talk to him about taking this fence down and he says he's, what I was told, that he's not going to take the fence down. I have pictures of the fence and the article that says that the unsightly fence cannot be there. I also have pictures of notes he puts up alongside the fence facing our driveway. Would you like to see them?
Just want to make it clear, the council's role in a situation like this where there's a notice on an open being, an opportunity to speak is really limited. You know, there's not a lot of notice about what you wanted to speak about, so all the council's going to be able to do is, well, nothing or simply just mention to the, to staff that this should be looked at. The issue that staff would be able to look into would be any ordinance violations. There are certain circumstances that are sometimes between neighbors and that the city won't even get involved in. Now, if you're, what you're saying is a violation of the ordinance may be a violation of the ordinance, that's a different story, that's something that the city can look into.
This is the city attorney, Jim Kelly.
I'm sorry, I should have introduced myself. As Attorney Kelly said, there's, all I can do at this time is turn this over to the ordinance committee and then they will have an ordinance meeting and then they can schedule at the time. You can be present to that meeting also.
Do you know when that would be?
Usually at the end of this meeting, we will set the meetings, but if you check with the city, they'll be able to tell you when it is.
He also never got a permit to put that fence up, just to add that on.
So I'll move the district attorney. We really shouldn't take a movement, a motion. You can direct it.
There you go.
You can simply direct it, the, direct it to staff and then to take the necessary steps.
Yep, it'll probably be either the first or second Tuesday or Wednesday of December.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So no one else is here to speak with the council at this time under citizens' appearance? Then we will move into our committee reports. Public Works Committee?
Behave's Public Works Committee, I'd like to take a motion to recommend approval of, approval to proceed with design for option B of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and expansion project.
I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve and proceed with the design of the option B of wastewater treatment upgrade and expansion project. Any questions or comments or concerns on that?
Just make a quick comment, there is a, there's a quick memo, Thad is here, from Cedar Corp., and then there's also a letter of authorization if you wish to proceed towards option B. There's a letter of authorization and Thad will probably run through that if you'd like to have him speak.
Yep. Okay. The, at Public Works, we went through the history of the project. Again, the original design was, was placed on the site and at that point in time when we did the original design, the request was for 450,000 gallons for the business local and the city had the two acres in the back along that property for expansion. That was the original design as, as shown on the, in the memo. The, after we went through the facility planning, design, and bidding phase last year, the business came forward and asked us to put the project on hold or reject the bids because they were evaluating their upgrades and so forth to the, to the plant. At that point in time, last winter, the city rejected the bids and worked with the city, with the local business for the last nine months to come up with a direction of what they were looking at for flow wise. They are looking at, at this point in time, to take the 450,000 gallons that they asked for the first time, but they also asked that the city evaluate future combinations of another 450,000 gallons if and when they determine that they would like that potential additional flow for their expansion. And that's what option B does. Option B reconfigured the site and stretched it out thin because at the same time, the local business came in and asked for the, to look at the future flows, they also asked to buy as much of that property, that two acres that the city has. And at this point in time, we're working with them to reconfigure the site, allow for future aeration bases because we have identified that if you go to the increased flows, that the aeration bases that they have right now are not adequate, so we would have to redo that. The anaerobic selector would also be put in for the 450,000 gallons today and then if we were to expand, it would, it shows the dash lines where the expansion would go. So with this layout now, it allows for future flows, ensures land for future flows because if you're going to sell off the northern portion of the land, we need to make sure the city is set for future flows at the treatment plant. So that's what this is doing. The cost we have is a redesign cost. We also have to go, it was a year and a half ago, this was the design, we have to go through, look at the code, code compliance again. We have to go back through the procurement process of all the equipment that we did for the treatment plant, see if there's any changes, if there's any changes to the equipment that was procured a year and a half ago, we have to make adjustments to all our drawings and so forth. Site piping, layouts, all that, pretty much most of the project sheets will get touched and every time you touch a sheet, more time involved and bringing them all back up to put them out for bids again. The schedule that we have in here matches what Egg, the local business is looking for. We'll advertise bids in March, open bids in April, start construction in May, June of 2015. Substantial completion is when the treatment plant will be ready to take on the additional flows that are proposed and that meets up with Egg and Pure's proposed schedule, this schedule does. And then final completion, we have a month or two in there where they have paving, they have landscaping, cleanup, you know, remove the trailers and abandon the systems that are not going to be used anymore. So this, this schedule will meet what the local business has asked for. And as Patrick said, the costs are locate, are in there and this letter of authorization is for design and bidding of the project to move forward.
Just real quick on the costs, there's an estimate of about $120,000 for the redesign phase, which includes redesigning, getting new plans, and then for the bidding phase, there's an estimate on, of $30,000. We are a partner with the local business with Egg Group here in this and so there will be an agreement on the cost sharing for that because technically we had the plan, had all the plans of the project good to go last winter and they had asked that we hold it off and there's some extra costs in there, so we're working with them on, on that. Yes, and it, and it is TIF eligible too. We're working on setting up the TIF district. We did have the joint review board get kicked off last week and we're working on that too. So the, the motion, if you have one, would probably also be to include the letter of authorization, approval of the letter of authorization.
All right. Yeah, did it, motion? Do I add that to it?
Sure.
Any second?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Concerns on the treatment? All in favor then, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
All right. With my second item, the reasons for the council tonight is not that there's any dissatisfaction with the current provider, but in keeping with city policy, reviewing all contract services. The issue before the council tonight is the frequency of pickup and the type of container used. Next month, we'll address the service provider picking up those containers. So with that in mind and consideration given to the citizen survey, I'd like to make a motion to maintain a monthly recycling collection schedule and do not consider city issued bins for recycling or garbage services.
I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second then, to maintain a monthly recycling collection schedule and do not consider city issued bins for recycling or garbage services. Any questions or comments?
Just a, a real quick addition in mind and then I'll step back. I believe there will be a little discussion on this because there was at the Public Works Committee. The citizen survey, we went through it at the Finance Committee, we went through it at the Public Works Committee, I don't remember if we went through it at the full council, I think we did real briefly, but the, the two questions, when Nick talks about the citizen survey, question number seven was, basically, we asked all of the residents in the city, what's your preferred method of recycling collection based on the, the volume at your own home? We asked them weekly, biweekly, monthly, or no preference. Monthly came away as the, the majority decision. It was 57.99% had said they would prefer monthly recycling pickup. Biweekly then had 27.22% and then there was roughly 7% had said weekly or 7% said no preference. So the committee had generally agreed that while the survey came back indicative of monthly recycling preference, but, but again, the survey is not a binding document, so it's, it's more an informational document to help you out. Question number eight then, we didn't specifically ask people, would you like to have city issued bins? What we asked them again was, if the city provided you a bin on wheels, would you be more likely, less likely, or would there be no change in the amount of recycling material or that, you know, would you recycle more material, less material, or no change? 46.75% said they would be more likely to recycle more material. 50.3% said they thought there would be no change. So it's, it's, it's up for, I guess, determination on what that really means. It's not very, it's not as overwhelming as what the schedule was. So with that, I will step back.
Yeah, if I could just, one thing I guess to consider, I know that we talked quite a bit in the Public Works Committee about this and one of the concerns were if we did go to a bin, what would happen with some of our larger refuse items that, that people may have that currently do get picked up? Thought about that some and I know with some of the bin options, there was some decent cost savings there where we can look at even maybe potentially offering a service that doesn't exist for the city today of a large refuse pickup or drop site. So I guess I'd just like to put that out as something to consider when we look at this.
I do have a lot of mixed feelings about it. I was in Appleton today and you see all their containers lined up and it does seem to work for them. I also took about eight kitchen cabinets to Manawa today and dropped them off because I was told I'm putting new ones in. And that wasn't a bin, it cost me $10 to drop them off, you know, and the gas in the truck.
That's not something you would have put on the curb anyway.
Well, I could have broke it up and put it out over a few months, but that would have taken a long time.
Yeah.
It's not worth the hassle.
The only thing that I'm going to say is that in the, in the survey, we asked the community if they, if the city would provide them with bins. Some of the people out there are thinking that the city is going to pick up the cost for those bins. They're not realizing that they're the ones that are going to have to pay for them bins.
Well, the, the options that we looked at were, we would be essentially renting them from the haulers and the cost would, would be built into what they quoted for us. They did give us quotes on purchasing bins if the city wanted to purchase them, but it was going to come out somewhere around 60,000 to 80,000 to $90,000 to buy the bins, depending on if you went with both. The one, I, I will say, Mike, you probably have a good point, the one thing we did talk about with that question was, we didn't specify to people that there would be no cost to them and so when you don't put that out there, people are free to think about, you know, I could tell you, nobody called me and asked, would there be a cost, but we also, if there would have been, we would have let them know.
We didn't know that when we put that out though. What just so happens when all the bids came in, it's still cost comparable with or without bins to what we're charging now, so there would be no difference.
The, the quick answer is we charge $13 a month as a garbage and recycling fee to everyone in the city and all of, almost all except for maybe one option with the highest bidder, almost all of them will fit in to the $13. The revenue we take in would cover almost any bid that we had.
Then if the bins aren't enough for a person, then they would have to rent more or buy from the company, which they would need to know ahead of time or we would just do that and they would have to find out later.
No, we would let them know ahead of time.
So if we were to choose on this, we need to let them know by when?
Before we start the service, yeah. I mean, we, whatever, so we wouldn't, we still, we wouldn't have picked a hauler yet or a contractor until at least next month and the motion next month probably isn't going to be start the service, it's going to be enter into a agreement with our current hauler or any of the three others that had put in a bid.
I think what Bruce is saying though is, if the city is going to provide with one bin, but someone wants two, do they pay for it themselves?
Right, and that's up to.
If the city supplies them with one and then it's the homeowners.
That's probably the, the way that we would go with that.
The different haulers had different options, but we had such a lively discussion in committee, that's why I broke it into two and said, we'll just look at the frequency and whether bins are not. And then next, well, once council decides which direction they want to head, then we'll look at which service provider to go with. Because otherwise, there's too many things on the schedule tonight to.
Yeah, and the recommendation coming to the council tonight was not to go with bins, so it's, it's not a moot issue, but the recommendation was leaning towards not having bins.
Right.
Even though there was no additional cost put on to the citizen for the bin, am I understanding you correctly?
Right, it had to do with, well, all the garbage trucks to pick up those bins are automated, which means they have a, a more defined area to put them in as far as being away from parked cars, being away from mailboxes. There was some concern, especially on my part, where frequently I'm parked in with cars that are over across the street from me, where I would have a very difficult time placing a garbage can except for maybe in the middle of my driveway, then I'd have to drive around trying to get in and out.
The three options that we focused on at Public Works were, one was the recommendation that's before you tonight, so it would be no bins at all, basically keep the service the same as bin and with the schedule it'd be the same. The second option was sort of a hybrid halfway on bins where either you'd have one garbage bin or one recycling bin and the way we were kind of leaning with it was one recycling bin and the garbage would stay the same. The third option then was to get, just issue two, potentially 65 or 95 or 96 gallon bins, a garbage and a recycling bin. And at any point in that meeting, there was discussion for and support for every one of the options and then at the very end, the recommendation that came to you was no bins. And part of the reason on that is if you go with bins, the haulers, because they're taking on the cost of purchasing the bins, they're going to look at how can they get their investment back. And usually that means four or five year contracts, but if you don't issue bins, you leave it the same, you know, you could have, I believe, one of the haulers that said like maybe a one or two year contract, another said three, but it's, it's, it's easier to go from no bins to bins than it is to issue bins and then try to, yeah, try and kind of, and because it's a, a big change for, for everybody because you don't have bins now, I mean, it's, it's a pretty big decision.
And what was the cost difference between doing like a biweekly with the recycling? Because I know for our household, I cannot wait until the end of the month because we literally have our recycling overflowing and in the house piling up waiting and, you know, it gets kind of.
There was a fairly substantial difference between monthly and bi-monthly.
And one of the interesting things, so we, we sent out all of the bids that we got at the committee and part of the reason was, you know, part of it was it mixed up the discussion on how we're going to do this first, but the other reason was everything's out on the table and so it's a very transparent, here's the bits. Depending on if you went biweekly or monthly and then on any three of those other options with bins, there's, we had four bids, four bids come in, four companies bid, three of them had two of the six options that they were technically the low bidder on. So it's really, depending on how you go, you can't go and say, well, what's biweekly and what's monthly with no bins because the difference is that it's two different haulers that gave you different rates. But technically, if you went biweekly, the total cost for the year was about $15,000 extra. And we're talking 80,000 to 90,000 for the service because that's, and that's about what we've been paying, it's not a, a big boost, you know. You have, and one thing I could probably say is you have, two of the haulers are here, so if you have questions, it's up to you guys if you want to open up the floor to them. I know one didn't raise his hand, but you have Harders and then you have the Grations too.
Well, a couple of comments on, on the bin thing at this time of the year, there's so much information, it's not just apple, 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 it's a lot of figuring, if you saw the packets, a lot of figuring. Not totally against changing, but at this time of the year, at snowbanks, it'd give the people a spring, summer, fall to, to get used to the whole system, to throw it out right, like, winter like last year and all, trying to get used, well, it's like anything, new system at the worst time of the year kind of thing. Then, there's so much information to go over if we were to change, let's spend the winter looking at it, let the rest of the council see all the figures that were there, so many charts that made you dizzy. So to make an intelligent choice with the rest of the council, it would really be not fair to our community to go with if we were to go with bins. That's why I believe that part of the reason the recommendation came back to leave it the same, at least for now, at least for this time of the year.
If I could address her question?
Sure.
If, even if, if it was with our company, you know, once a month pickup for recycling, there would be no limit on what you could put out?
Well, we have that now with Gration, we have no limit with, you can put whatever we want out and it's recyclable and they take. So I'm just more concerned that I have it piling up everywhere and we just have it once a month now. It'd be nice if we had that option to have twice a month to have our recycling and it wouldn't be such a problem with families who do recycle on a continuous basis.
I guess I have a question for Grations. Just because I'm in New London a lot, I know New London has gone to some sort of bins provided by you guys. Was that a hard transition for that community or does everybody pretty much participate? Or does everybody pretty much participate?
In which community, Joanna?
Uh, New London, or that's where I've seen in that district.
And they have, yeah, they have little, actually, do they have bins for everybody you have at your house?
Now, for, are you talking recycling or?
Yeah, recycling.
Trash wise?
Either one. Was it a hard transition for people to make?
They don't have, they still use their own cans and all that for recycling.
Yeah, they have the option of, of getting a bin from us.
Oh, okay.
But it's, it's, they're at their, you know, if they want it or if they don't. That's their option. But most of them typically are still using their own cans. I would say, you know, seventy, eighty percent of the community still uses their own cans, you know, like you guys do.
Then they only gave you, how do you put a bin out? No, no, no. Okay, so they always, they, they do use their own bins.
Okay.
Okay, did I answer that right?
Yes, yeah.
They do, they do their own bins, they do use their own bins.
Okay.
And we don't, but we can, we do provide them to hauls and we can run tour carts out for a dollar a month or something. We just, if people want one, there's certainly, it's easily done. So we can, you know, always rent them out. But people do it on their own, like you do it in my way, it's the same thing in New London.
Any other questions or comments?
A question, if we do not consider having city-issued bins, do the citizens still have the option of having recycling bins issued to them by the refuse hauler? Is that an option that they would have available to them?
You mean the ones that would be meant for automated?
You posed another question. Is all the recycling an automated system with all the haulers?
Bins, bins automated, no bins.
They can be both, bins can be both. You know, they could stop by, I'm sure if, if you let, in New London, he, they mentioned that they let people rent bins while they still have a guy that comes around. Basically, you're just issuing them a nice looking garbage can, is what it is. But it can be both.
So two different services or trucks would come through the town. Are we still talking just recycling, right?
You can talk anything you would like, it's pretty wide open.
Well, the comment you just made, though, that was just the recycling?
Well, I've, I could, my experience is, I've driven, so I drive to Dale quite often, and I see Gration containers through some of the towns there. I don't know if that's automated pickup, but I've seen them just out. You know, where I've, I've got my own Rubbermaid garbage can. I could, I think what they had just mentioned was for maybe a dollar a month, I could rent a Gration garbage can.
Right, that's it, but that doesn't mean the automated would come through, you're just renting.
No, I think it's just a guy gets off the truck, it's the same pickup.
Same thing, it just, okay, I want one of their bins, I like them, I want them, yeah.
Usually, the automated truck is when you're gonna just pick up all of them, you know, with just the robotic arm and whatever.
I mean, there's an option for you then too, you know, just do a couple bins and bigger ones. Am I right? It shows, what about a buck, buck a month?
That's what we currently run them off for you. So we, then we build a household directly.
We just do that. I, I know people in Waipaka that it's so unbelievably expensive that so many people I've talked to just go down to the recycling place with their trash and so on. It's just, and I told them what we were paying, it's like, oh, that's wonderful. And to be able to, I, I would consider even, now that I know that renting, same system but renting bins, so, because in our case, in the basement then back out. And Nick was saying in the summer he doesn't because, you know, it's, you know, it's not cold and everything doesn't freeze and, you know, bees and all that stuff. So it, that's a good option to have that. And they're nice and they don't, you know, let anything in.
Waipaka's also a subscription area.
Right.
It's, it's totally different than what you guys have.
I think Clintonville, Waipaka, New London are all on that? You contract with each homeowner, right?
Clintonville, Waipaka, I'd say they're pretty much, you know, I mean, it's the same process of how you do it in my way. It gets only subscription, they can go to wherever hauler, they don't have a current contract.
Well, it's a little different, but the contracts with us and then we bill the customers. And then you just bill us, where, yeah, and then in the other, then you bill each home or whatever.
Yeah, if they would like a tow truck, we would probably have that. If you have a service you provide on our taxes, if they want a tow truck, if they so desire, I would say you probably want to just have them bill it. We take care of that service. And we can put that, you can, you can put that into, to the customers or however. They would provide, want it, want it to provide for their, to their residents.
But you're really not gaining anything if, if the whole town's not on board with it.
No, you're not.
No, it's, you're just paying for a garbage can that you could be using a generic one from an Ards for free. So it really doesn't make any difference.
Did you get your answer? Your question answered, though?
Yeah, more than that, yeah. Just listening. It opened up more conversation, which is even more informative, so that's good.
Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? We have a motion on the floor then to maintain monthly recycling collection schedule and do not consider city-issued bins for recycling or garbage services. If there's no other questions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I have nothing else for council.
Was it three and three or four and two?
Four and two.
Four and two, thank you.
Nothing else now?
Nothing.
Thank you. All right, then one more one?
I should say that in next month then we'll, we'll be discussing which provider to go with.
All right, then we'll make.
December eighth?
Yep. December eighth it'll be.
We'll move on to seven B, Finance Committee.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, we make a motion to deny the request for funding from the Waioauga Lake Restoration.
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to deny the request for funding for the Waioauga Lake Restoration. Any questions or comments?
I'll run a quick comment up there. We've had the last two Finance Committee meetings, we've discussed this topic. The original request that came in from Waioauga Lake Restoration, it should be in your packet. It was basically for twenty-eight thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars. What they're looking at is going for two grants, a ten thousand dollar grant and a twenty-five thousand dollar per year, three-year grant. So they're asking for the match. At the first meeting, which is in October, and thankfully, we've recorded these meetings so you could go back and sort of try to organize a lot of the comments and a lot of the numbers that were kind of tossed out. Watching that meeting, you learned a little bit on, I guess you, you learned a little bit. I'll just say that, you learned a little bit. And then going back into the committee meeting in November, we started to peel apart what the request actually was. Because the twenty-eight thousand was sent in writing. When the lake group came to the meeting, they had said, well, the twenty-eight thousand is more of like a big picture, three to four-year project for identifying weeds and then also treating a couple of the more major invasive weeds. At the last Finance Committee meeting, I had mentioned, when we looked through the packet of information that the lake group had from StanTech, that it looked like StanTech was gonna charge them a twenty-five hundred dollar fee to apply for grants on their behalf. And then there was a note after that twenty-five hundred dollar fee. And the note said, basically, pay the twenty-five hundred and then stop until you find out if you're awarded any of the DNR grants. And so we had, and I'll just say that I had interpreted that to mean the money that the lake group had been asking for, the, one, one figure was mentioned, it was twenty-seven hundred dollars by the end of November. And it looked like that was a number for a later date. And so what I had explained was, well, it looked like really they only owed twenty-five hundred. There was some mention at the first meeting that they had already paid thirteen hundred and, and that they had eighteen hundred dollars on hand. So it looked like, from my determination, that they owed twelve hundred to the grant application company and that they would've had enough money on hand. So at the committee meeting, we said, well, maybe there's not the big urgency by the end of this month that they need money in their pocket to get going on the grant. I was a little bit off on that. But what I can tell you is I did clarify through StanTech. StanTech had said that the twenty-five hundred dollar fee is going to be the responsibility of Waioauga Lake Group. So the twenty-five hundred dollar fee, we shouldn't at this point pay any attention to on our end. What they're looking for is the grant for the first year of treatment on the lake would be for twenty-three thousand dollars worth of treatment for the weeds. And right now, the grant application company, StanTech, they're applying for the grant. The lake group has to come up with one-third of twenty-three thousand. And the guy who's putting the grant together from StanTech has to show, does the lake group have either money on hand of roughly seventy-seven hundred dollars? Or do they have a way to get that money? So it could be some sign of support from the city council. It could be loans from the city council, it could be loans from, from anywhere. But basically, what they're looking to do right now is bolster their grant application. And the grant itself is due like the second week in December. So in talking to StanTech, what he had specifically mentioned was anything that the city can do to help towards the seventy-seven hundred dollar share that would be due for the first year of treatment would go in with the grant application and it could earn them more points because they would have a partner in the community that's helping them on the project. But what he also said was, the grant application was going in anyway. It's just a matter of whether the city wanted to jump on. When you read the document that StanTech has, which is in your packet, it says in there that they're going to apply for a grant for the lake group twice. So if they apply for the grant this year and they don't get it, they're going to apply, I believe, by the end of next year. And that would delay the treatment by a year. And there's a little bit of a varying idea on how much that may cost. Right now, the lake group is looking at twenty-three thousand dollars a year for treatment for three years. And they had mentioned that if, if you get delayed a year, that may be a lot more. But I don't know that we have a good number on that. So basically, the request right now, according to StanTech, is, is the city able to bolster the grant application? And the recommendation that was at the Finance Committee was a recommendation, I believe, to reject the request altogether. Does that help?
That's correct.
So that's essentially where we are. Any questions on that, comments?
I had made a comment in the committee meeting that until they got fifty-one percent of the people living on the lake, the mill pond, to sign on to a lake district, I didn't think it was right for the rest of the citizens to put up money for the water. Now, once they get a lake district and they get that fifty-one percent and they show that they're interested in it, then it might be different. But I, I think that the homeowners there, who have the waterfront property, have to sign on first.
And we all agreed with that in conversation in committee. Any more comments, questions? And we have a motion and a second on the floor to deny the request for funding for the Lake, Waioauga Lake Restoration. If there's no more questions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion not to consider general obligation bond funding for the City Hall project and to proceed towards Design Phase Three as outlined by Cedar Corp.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to not consider a general obligation bond funding for the City Hall and to proceed towards Design Phase Three as outlined by Cedar Corp. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick comment, in a way, that's a two-pronged, well, obviously, it's two-pronged motion. What you're doing is with the general obligation bond funding, that's one of the options, I believe there's four to five or maybe more options to finance the City Hall project. One is through general obligation bonds. And what that means is you're borrowing them for twenty years. And talking to Lers, the rate on those is around two-point-eight to three percent, but it's hard to gauge that because in the last two to three months, it's changed. And for the borrowing phase, if the City Hall project stays on track, the borrowing phase would, or the approval would be like in March. Because you still have to finish design, you have to bid it out, award bids, and then come up with your financing. The reason why that's important now is because with the general obligation bonds, it's required that there's a referendum if you go with them. The other options that you have are the general obligation notes, which would be a ten-year instrument with a balloon payment in the tenth year. So basically, you'd need to refinance somewhere around year nine, nine and a half, ten. Right now, Lers had mentioned, so the twenty-year bonds are two-point-eight to three percent. The ten-year note, as of today, is two percent. But then again, you'd, you'd have to refinance in ten years. The other two tools that we talked about were the USDA Rural Development Loan Program. And then there also is the Local Government Property Fund. Depending on the number of years that you borrow, those are anywhere from three, three and a half, four, four and a half percent for interest. But the difference between the general obligation bonds and the notes, the rural development, and the property fund is that the other three do not require you to go to referendum. And again, the reason why that's important right now is if this project would go to referendum, you would be looking at April. And you need to get that on track and rolling before the end of November. So you're looking at, you know, about December. What you wouldn't want to do is get to, and, and I'm, I'm speaking as a preference, I guess, would be, you don't want to find out in March that you need to go to referendum or that you want to go to referendum if you would choose either way. Because in March, you can't put it on the ballot in April. It would be either a special election or, I believe, in November. So the recommendation from the committee was not to pick a financing instrument at this point, but not to consider general obligation bonds. And in part, because of what you're saying is the, the recommendation would be that there will be no referendum on the City Hall project at this point. Then, if that is approved, and, and maybe I'll defer to Attorney Calney on that after I'm done here, you might want to vote on both of those topics individually if you can. Because if you're going to referendum, well, the next five to six months is going to be referendum. And then the, the City Hall timeline would then be picked up or not, depending on the results of the referendum, so you're looking at May or June. If you're looking not to go to referendum, you can move towards Design Phase Three and that would start within the next couple of weeks. Does that help? Do you have anything to add?
Basically, it's a timing issue. If you're going to take an option that involves the referendum, you gotta give yourself an extra hundred and twenty days in there, basically. For example, if you were gonna do the referendum for April, I believe the question's due the third of December or something like that. It, it's pretty soon, so you, you have to build in lead time. And at the same time, the public should be aware of the fact that we're talking about a referendum. That's why it was made a specific part of your motion, why it was suggested to be. Any other questions or comments?
So we have a motion and it is seconded, but it's seconded as a, as a combined statement there. And you asked to have that separated?
I was going to probably defer to the city attorney on that, whether it's appropriate to vote that way or... I suppose if, if you vote this way and it fails, well, then you'll have to come up with something else anyway.
That's true. It, it's always cleaner when you have single motions because then they stand on their own. You know, from a legal standpoint, you're rarely gonna hear a guy say, oh, stack up those motions so that, you know, there's several different things that could be troublesome in each. But it, it could be voted on this way as well. Again, preferable from my standpoint that you would divide that.
Maybe what you do is you pull it out because then if you decide that you want to get going on Design Phase Three, Thad is here and he has a memo in the packet too. going on Design Phase Three, Thad is here and he has a memo in the packet, too. And as with the treatment plant project, there's a memo and a potential letter of authorization if you're looking at moving forward with Design Phase Three. What's up to you, Scott?
May we break that out into two separate motions, then?
Yeah, you would ask for somebody make a motion to divide, somebody agree to it, and you state the way you want to divide it, which really is reading kind of, you know, half of it and then the other half.
All right, then, in view of that, I would like to resend my initial motion and rephrase it.
I'll withdraw my second.
Withdraw your second.
Sure.
It works, too. You can just withdraw completely if you'd like, both, start from scratch.
Start from scratch.
All right, starting fresh, then, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion not to consider general obligation bond funding for the City Hall project.
And I'll second that.
Now, we have a motion and a second to not consider general obligation bond funding for the City Hall project. Any questions or comments? I guess I'm going to ask the question of what determined the committee to decide that they didn't want to go with general obligation bonds? What was their reasoning for?
Everything that was just stated. Everything that Patrick and Mr. Okene just went through. They just stated why we decided that way.
So you're basically just saying, I'm just asking the question so the community knows. So what you're basically saying is you just don't want to do a referendum?
No. What we're basically saying is that had we built the City Hall five years ago when we first started looking at it, it would be done and we wouldn't have buildings that were deteriorating. We've waited and we've waited and we've waited for years as prices have exploited. Because of this waiting, we're tired of waiting. We're going to move forward. And to move forward is to pass this recommendation.
Okay, so that then, tell me with anything with that, so there was nothing determinated with this on the funding? You never had any thoughts about what kind of funding was described here, is what you're saying then?
Well, we're saying, we haven't decided what kind of funding we want to do yet.
Right. But you already threw one out.
Yes, we did.
Okay, so my thinking is, is that that was it? Because with the Geo bond, we know that it's 2.8 to 3%, where the balloon payment that lasts 10 years, we don't, if we end up going with that, we don't know what that 10-year could be. So what we're doing is giving our kids a bill that we don't have any control over. We don't know what it's going to be. Correct?
If you would go with Geo notes, because then there's the other two programs, too. I see what you're saying. If you decide to go Geo notes, you know for 10 years what your interest rate might be. But then, like you say, for 10 years, you might not know that either.
Right. Okay. All right. No other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to proceed towards Design Phase Three as outlined by Cedar Corp.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to proceed towards Design Phase Three as the outline by Cedar Corp. Any questions or comments?
Thad is here to speak on. They do have a memo with an estimate, or, I'm sorry, an estimated cost for what Design Phase Three would cost. And that's, of course, I don't have it hot and handy here. It's $109,000.
Any questions on the memo? Again, we've completed steps one and two. What this project is proceeding forward with is the schematic design summary report that was presented July 10th to the city and associated site work in the back of the parking lot along Alfred Street. We propose to complete the plans and specs for competitive bidding. Design phase tasks are listed as well as bidding phase. Now, it also lists the owner's responsibilities and additional allowance features for the City Hall that are yet to be finalized. That will be finalized through the design phase. Costs are listed. What I did mention here on the letter of authorization, it does include the bidding phase. However, I know your agenda spells out design only. By approving this, and Attorney Calney can comment, by approving this, at this point, you approve the letter of authorization. Also, the bidding phase will be approved with a city motion at the time that it is put on the agenda.
So coming back next month, are we talking about putting the bidding?
Probably February, March. We have a couple of months of design. But the bidding phase, by authorizing the letter of authorization tonight, will only authorize what you are authorizing is to design, to finish the design phase.
That's really what we gave notice of and what the board, what the committee had acted on.
Yes, that's my point. And then the schedule is spelled out here. We're looking at starting construction in June of '15 and completing it the following
All in favor of proceeding with the design phase? Signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried.
And lastly, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion for approval of checks number 30899 through 30969 totaling $116,950 and the monthly financial statements.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the checks and the monthly financial statements. Any questions or comments on those? Roger Ruko?
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Edwards?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Najowski?
Aye.
Washington Caris, six aces.
Thank you. Anything else, Scott?
That is all for committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Please fire an ambulance.
No action for counsel.
Public health and relief ordinance?
No action for counsel.
Recreation?
No action for counsel.
Public property and purchase?
No action for counsel.
Okay, and planning commission has no action. Okay, new business. Approve operator's license for Nicholas Hendrick and Mercedes Kaminsky.
And?
And, let's see, Way We Go Senex and Donna Zitzky and Wilson's Brickhouse. Or is that for her at Wilson's?
For her at that.
I'll make a motion to approve the operator license for Nicholas Hanski, or Hendrick, and Mercedes Kaminsky for the Way We Go Senex, and also for Donna Zitzky for the Wilson's Brickhouse.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. I need a motion, then, to approve a parade permit for the Way We Go Chamber Christmas Parade on December 6, 2014.
I will make a motion to approve the parade permit for Way We Go Chamber Christmas Parade on December 6, 2014.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions or comments on the parade? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. All right. Appointment of alderperson to the planning commission. We had some, Patrick was on the committee, and after some discussion and him being zoning, we need to take him off so, of that particular spot, so we need to put someone on there. And I would like to appoint Shani Appleby at this time.
All right. Have we given notice of who we might want to appoint at this point, prior to this?
The notice we've got on the agenda is to appoint an alderperson and appoint a citizen member. So we don't have specifically on the agenda who.
There's no violation of the open meetings law in doing it this way. Normally, you put the name out there in case somebody objects, frankly, so that the person's not embarrassed by an objection. So normally, the way you go through an appointment procedure is you have the name out there. But here, we're giving notice that there's going to be an appointment of an alderman to the planning commission, and that's what the clerk knew when he published the agenda. Therefore, the greatest notice we could give was given. Some people might want to be able to say they wanted to be heard about who might have been appointed, but I don't know that that's a violation of the open meetings law. I was not able to find anything that says it is. I'm a little more nervous, though, about the citizen member, frankly, you know, because we don't have any idea who that might be and the board doesn't. But again, at the time that the agenda was posted, the best knowledge we had is that we were going to appoint a citizen member, and if somebody was interested and wanted to come to speak for this issue, they could have been here. So that's generally what you look for in open meetings notice. So, you know, if you're concerned about whether there's a problem with doing this, probably not legally. The only issue you might have is if, you know, you want other people to know who might be appointed. That would be the only issue you would have. That'd be more of a practical than a legal issue.
So what you're saying is that maybe then, well, we should just leave it open and have the committee appoint somebody there?
Well, a good thing to do is, a good thing to do is, is to put out the name. And what is common is you put out the name. If somebody's going to object to it, you say, you know, that personal contact can say, tell me why. And then you can weigh that before there's action on it and it becomes public and there's some objection to it in public, just as a courtesy to the person you're trying to appoint. I've seen that happen in a lot of places. Again, in the alderman, it's probably not as important as it might be for the citizen. If you follow what I'm saying here. And I'm sorry I didn't talk to you about that before, but I didn't know who we were.
Okay.
Did I really confuse things or?
No. No.
But the mayor can recommend appointment.
Yeah, these are both, these are both mayoral recommendations. This isn't like the council vacancy situation. This is clearly a mayoral recommendation, and then the council acts.
But it's, you said you couldn't find where it's a violation of open law.
No.
I'm only questioning because there is stuff for planning commission, and if we wait another month.
Well, if we don't make appointments tonight, we're going to have to have a special meeting probably in the next couple of weeks. So, and the reason I say that is because you have, you already had voted to change the ordinance to take the city administrator off of the plant commission because I'm the zoning administrator and also my own boss in that situation. So you already did that. In the meantime, you have had a citizen resign from the plant commission.
Right.
And then you have one citizen that there's some question on attendance, I guess, is the big thing. And so what resulted was we had a conditional use hearing, we had a signed permit for Hutchinson Insurance, and then, I believe, was there a third? Trying to think what the third item was that was on there.
The TIFT.
Oh, the TID hearing. And what happened was, you're supposed to have seven members of the committee. I believe three of them were able to make it, so we weren't able to get a quorum. Now, as the committee sits now, it's likely, based on attendance, that you may only get four people to show up. And you need four people to vote to approve anything. So you're assuming without an alderperson and without a citizen member, you're assuming that there would be a unanimous vote to be able to get anything done. So you're sort of in the awkward position where technically, we need both of the positions. We need one, for sure. We need, two would be great. And I say that because there's probably in early December, there's going to be a planning commission meeting to take up the conditional use.
Right. And that's what I'm afraid of, that we have a business that's waiting on us to get our stuff together. And so, like you said, with the alderman, it's not an issue.
Yeah. It's pretty clear it's going to be one of you six.
Or five.
Or five, because Ron's already out.
And we're used to rejection, so it's all right. But I was even questioning about the citizen this time. If it's not a violation of open records and open meeting laws, do we have?
We're pretty defendable.
We're pretty defendable. Then I'm just wondering if we shouldn't go through it this time?
Push it through.
Push it through so that we have, we can do this for these businesses. They shouldn't be held up on our account.
Well, and the thing is, is when I went around trying to find, as you know, trying to find, I'm thinking that we need to have somebody that can be reliable, somebody that really wants to be on it. And I went around looking and asking, and I came up with a gentleman that was, that said, yeah, he would, and he put in his survey back when we did the survey thing. So he said he would do just about any place. So at this, at this time, I would like to.
Proceeding, you're still on.
Yeah, we're still on.
Yeah, we're on.
Do Shani's first.
Yep.
Okay, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Shani to the planning commission.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Citizens, I would like to recommend that we appoint Neil Lurkey to that position.
Looking for a second.
Pardon me? I need a motion. I need a motion. I'm just making the recommendation, but council has to make the motion.
I'll make a motion that, how would you word that?
Confirm the appointment.
To confirm the appointment of Neil Lurkey to the planning commission.
Because of, now, a second? And we will go back to the, back to the drawing board, I guess, and try to find someone.
You didn't have, that was it, your recommendation?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Not a lot of people want to do.
Especially you.
I mean, planning commission's a lot of work.
Mm-hmm. Right. So I'll have to go back and find somebody.
Mike, procedurally, I just have a question for you on what you mentioned. You mentioned that Neil had indicated that he wanted to serve on planning commission?
Yes. Yes, he put it out.
I don't believe we received, we didn't receive a, but it was back in April, though. Yeah, we didn't. Because we would have had him on there, you know? And so, I mean, we could take a look through it again, but I don't remember seeing. So I could check.
Somebody, somebody, he was in City Hall and he was talking, and he said something about being on committees, and he said if he could, he would be on anything that he could fit onto. And he said if he could, he would be on anything that he could fit onto.
Okay, so... But he didn't fill out the form, though. And that's the thing. I just want to make sure that people know that Neil Lurkey's name wasn't... Or anyone's name was not a... You know, if they submitted a form, they were on the list. And we have one on the list, you know? And that's... If he's... If he did want to be on, you know... We still have the forms that we could collect. Two people could sign up, but I'm just saying impartially that I don't remember his name. Formally, anyway. But that doesn't, you know, the forms were not an end-all-be-all list either. It's still up to the mayor to nominate.
Mayor's report, I have nothing at this time. Administrator's report?
Just two quick topics. You do have the proposed budget a little bit later tonight. It's after the closed session. The closed session is to finalize wages. All of that information will be in the open afterwards. Inside that budget, you do have an estimated sheet on the equalized... On the assessed values, the assessed ratio and the tax rate. The state is going to be releasing our final statement of assessment later this week. And there was a manufacturing appeal by one of the larger manufacturers in town. And so with that appeal, it was just finalized at the end of October. Their... The state did tell me that their numbers are coming out. I believe it's on Wednesday. So in your packet, you'll have a colored sheet where it says assessed equalized value. I'm probably going to be within a couple of cents. But it looks like, you know, the tax rate has been $8.16. But it's been 8.16, .2, .4. You know, if it goes to .5, it'll look like your tax rate is raising by a penny. And I just want to caution that the number you have is an estimate. Now, that's okay for tonight because what you approve is the dollar amount that we levy. And that's what's on the resolution. So the tax rate later this week, I will report back to you on what that final is. But I don't want to tell you it's going down by a penny. And then there's word that we're cutting taxes when really it might end up being the same. And I don't want to go the other way where it looks like we're raising taxes and it may not be the case either. So that's that. The other comment, real quick, is Wapaka County collects our property taxes. We do not collect property taxes at city hall. BMO Harris, the last couple of years, has been a site in the city for people to go in and pay their taxes. The problem is, Wapaka County didn't contract with BMO Harris to do that. It was just up to the bank that they just offered it as a service. And they've given notice or they've put signs up at BMO that have said they're not going to be collecting property taxes locally this year. Part of the problem is, you know, when you get your check from your mortgage company, your escrow check, usually it's not always the exact dollar amount of your taxes. So if you owe money, that's one thing. If you have money coming back at BMO Harris, they would end up giving you a refund in the past. The problem is, BMO Harris's policies stay... State that they won't cut a check or give money to people that aren't account holders at BMO Harris. So they run into a litany of problems on that end. What that means for the public is, this year now, in December and January, I believe the first half is due January 31st or the full payment, the only depository or the only collection is going to be at the Wapaka County Treasurer's office. So I just wanted to put that out there that it's not a city hall decision. It's a private business decision by BMO Harris that they're not going to be doing yet at all. Okay? And that's all I've got.
Okay. Please, chief, report.
I'd just like to add that we're operating out of our office in the middle school to rave reviews. My entire team went to the Heroin Summit last week. Learned a lot. And the group Rise Again, or Rise Together, that did a small presentation there is going to be coming to City of Wagiga before Christmas. The school's organizing it. There'll be two sessions, one for the students and then one in the afternoon and evening for the community to go. And once you see that out there and publicize it, I strongly recommend you make a point to attend. It's pretty compelling. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, then I need a motion then to close the public hearing for 2015 budget.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the 2015 budget.
I'll second that.
Motion and second to close public hearing for 2015 budget. Any questions or comments or concerns? Roco?
Edwards?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Nodowski?
Aye.
Question with aye.
Number 13, closed session. Regarding conferring the legal counsel of the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerns to be... Strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. The reason for the closed session is to discuss ordinance regarding the railroad. Council may choose to reconvene to open session at the completion of the closed session in order to take action on items from the closed session. I need a motion for that.
You should probably do 14 with it. Since we're...
We can stay in closed session.
Staying closed session.
Okay. Then we'll have closed session also in consideration of employment promotions, compensation and performance evaluation data of city employees who is subject to jurisdiction and authority of the council. The reason for the closed session is to... Final reviews of wages for the 2015 budget. Council may choose to reconvene in open session at the completion of the closed session in order to take action on items from the closed session. I need a motion and a second for that.
I still move for both closed sessions.
Second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Roco?
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Nodowski?
Aye.
Edwards?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Carried with all ayes.
We're in a closed session now.
Do you have the time? 7:49?
4:49.
Okay. All right. Next, we will move on to number 15. 2015 proposed budget review. We need a motion then for the recommendation of the 2015 employee wages.
This just be a motion to approve what we have on the sheet?
Right. That would be, yeah.
Our motion that we approve the 2015 employee wages. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2015 employee wages. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried. Next, we need a motion then to approve the departmental budgets.
Make a motion to approve the departmental budgets.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the departmental budgets. There's no questions or anything with the budget.
We have a real quick... We'll run through it real quick. But we did go through the whole proposed budget in October. And it ended up being... And I'll just go through a couple of the highlights here. And according to the budget summary, we're predicting revenues of 1.778 million, 1,778,528. Expenditures are matching that. To back up a little bit, in the budget book, there's an executive summary. It is all of the changes and differences that we reviewed at every committee. I will not go through that again. It's basically repeating myself because nothing's changed. If you skip through to the assessed and equalized values and tax rate, that is the colorful form. And you will notice that it is estimated for our assessed values because the state of Wisconsin will be releasing our assessed statement, the final statement of assessment, probably on Wednesday. Right now, it's estimated there was an appeal on one of the manufacturing properties, so they haven't given us the final yet. Essentially, we do know our equalized values. And the ratio of assessed to equalized value is estimated about 111 percent, 111.63. The tax rate for the last three years, 2012, 13 and 14, the mill rate has been $8.16 per thousand. On this sheet, you will see a total tax levy of 750,142 compared to last year's, basically $1,000 higher in the tax levy. The mill rate is estimated at 8.15 as opposed to 8.16. But I would caution you that that is an estimate. I did not want to say that we're raising taxes by a penny to 8.17 or that we're cutting it to 8.15 because either way in the paper, if it's one penny either way, it could be raising or lowering or keeping it the same. I anticipate it's going to be about the same, 8.16. Problem is, it's 8.163, 8.162, 8.164. At some point, it will be 8.165, which will show as 8.17. But that's the estimated sheet. What I will do is, I'll update that this week. I anticipate that we'll probably have a special council meeting in early December, potentially on the conditional use. And so if there's anything that needs to be reported back to you, that's... I'll do that. Skipping through the budget summary, we've already gone through. We'll go to the revenues and the expenditures. For the very first page, basically a breakdown. It's like a pie chart. Shows you for every $100 of city general revenue, general property taxes. So the property tax at 750,000 makes up less than half of the total that we bring in, $46.71. Intergovernmental and shared aid is $41.54. And then our charges for services gets down to about $8 and then sort of the minimal numbers. But the big... The two that we get that are the big are the general property taxes, essentially 46 percent of what we take in. And the intergovernmental shared aid, 41 percent. Skip through the revenues, which we had looked at in October. They haven't, again, changed. Go to expenditures now. For every $100 of revenue we take in, which is what we looked at, for every $100 that we spend, 2595 goes to public safety. And that's police, fire, ambulance and the building inspector, which is a public safety function. Capital improvements, that's the $300,000 that we transfer to the capital fund, $16.87. And it goes to public works, 1583. General government, 1510. Leisure and education, which is parks and the library, 1401. Debt service, $11.47. And other general and health and social services are less than $1. So the big areas where we spend our money, public safety, capital improvements, public works out of the general budget. Any questions on that? Got a sheet in here that shows our debt payment schedule. That's just a breakdown on how much we're paying. I don't believe that we had that in the past in here, but it's something that you can take a look at. Getting into personnel and public works, you will see the public works wage schedule. What we've determined is a 3 percent increase on the base rate. Relates to a 2.5 to 2.95 percent increase for our employees. Full-time personnel, you get approved the rates. But essentially, it's a 3 percent raise for the general and city hall, 5 percent for myself, for the administrator. Then we also have the assistant administration or assistant administrator, which is loosely titled because it's a placeholder. But later in the year, we will discuss what that position entails. Get into the full-time police. You have 1.5 for the chief and for the corporal percent, 3 percent for the sergeant and the patrolman. And that is the quick and easy review of the budget. The very last sheet in your packet or in the budget packet is the resolution number 560, which is the next item after you vote on the departmental budget. Any questions?
So we have a motion and a second.
You do.
Nice job putting this together.
Thanks. I appreciate it. It's... I apologize on that estimation with the tax rate. But like I said, what you approve on the resolution is the dollar amount of the levy.
Do I have a roll call?
Brunner?
Aye.
Edwards?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Nodowski?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Motion carries with all ayes.
Now, we need a motion to approve the resolution number 560.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 560 for the adoption of the 2015 budget.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments for the resolution? Or a roll call?
Appleby? Rasmussen?
Aye.
Nodowski?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Edwards?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Motion carries with all ayes.
Set meetings for December.
We have the finance for December 1st, 6:00 p.m. I believe we have public works for December 8th, 6:00 p.m. And then I do not believe that we've set any others. But I do know that we have to have a planning commission meeting. I believe Thursday, December 4th. I'll double-check that right away in the morning, though.
That would be at what time, 6?
It's probably going to be up to the committee. Or the chair. Mike's the chair, I'm sorry.
December 4th?
Yeah, it's a Thursday.
Yep. Whatever fits for, I guess, the other members. If they can...
That would be Bruce and Shaney right now.
6 o'clock is good.
Sit this bike for me.
And the citizens?
Yep, I'll check with them. Police committee?
Yeah, let's do December 10th at 6:00.
The last couple of months, you've done the ordinance committee right after 2. Is that something that I know Attorney Calney's going to be following up on? Dogs?
Yeah. What, Shaney, do you want to do ordinance right after that? And if I... Two burgers, one still.
Is there a different day that would work better? For anybody besides that day?
What day were you talking, 10th?
The 10th.
Wednesday, right?
Does that not work for you?
Mike is out of town again for trading, so it's going to be hard for me. If the meetings are going to be long, to make sure I have my kids under control.
Could bring him here, look at Mason.
Uh, you could, um...
No, you don't want Mason's better than what my...
Actually, that's bad for me, too.
Oh, that's bad for you, too.
Yeah.
And then council is December 17th.
What about...
15th, I'm sorry.
15th, I see.
Well, what about Wednesday, the 3rd? Or do we already have some scheduled?
I don't think we have anything there yet.
Yeah, that's good for me.
Is that good for you, is that good for you?
That'll work for me.
Let's do the Wednesday, the 3rd, 6:00.
And ordinance after?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, does that work for you, Scott?
We need a public problem.
Thursday?
It probably should.
Not Wednesday, the 3rd. Wednesday, yes.
There's four, five potential projects out there.
Is it can we set yet or do you need to... Is it somewhere we can after? You know, whatever thing's going to fall in.
We should have a meeting, for sure. For sure. Yeah, we can say it's weird things going on lately.
So that's... Well, I'm just wondering, can you set a date or is there enough stuff up here that you don't want to?
Let's set it... Let's see where we're at, maybe in a week.
Okay.
Check on that. That's for you. You can hang on to that if... So recreation, I don't know that we've got...
Do we need one?
I don't know that we have anything except Dewey Stelzner asked about flooding the park and flooding out a hole in the park to get an ice skating rink. I don't know if we need a meeting to follow up on that or anything, or if he just wants us to have the fire department do that.
My shot would be to try to...
Yeah. I don't know that we need a meeting for that, though. Because by the time it goes to council to get any approval on anything, it's December 15th. 15th.
If the fire department's going to do it, just let them do it.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
We're talking about maybe having a little cart out there with hot chocolate and stuff like that, that they pull on.
Potential for that.
Oh, we talked about a lot of stuff, but it probably would evolve.
But it's Samponi.
One thing at a time.
But if the fire department's going to do it, that's just, it's them. It doesn't involve anything that we're, you know, we talked about.
They're, Dewey talked about the sledding hill, doing more with the sledding hill. And you, oh, you were there, yeah. Flooding out the, the little storm pond for some ice. And then he thought, well, what if we had the concession stand open?
Yeah, we were all.
Oh, but, yeah.
Oh, we were dogged. Yeah. Let's just get a flood per se working.
Yeah. Okay. I think that's it.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Need a motion to adjourn, then.
I'll second that.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn 10:14.